Good evening and welcome to the regular Town Council Meeting of the Town of Garner May the 21st. It's a beautiful Garner evening and beautiful crowd here tonight and maybe we can make some good decisions and keep the government rolling for another couple of weeks here. Thank you all for being here, glad to see the participation. We start with the roll call, it's usually by the Town Clerk, but she's in a training session this week and we have a temporary substitute and that's our Town Attorney, Ms. Jones. If you would, call the roll please.
Mayor Gutten?
Here.
Mayor Proton Ban?
Here.
Councilman Dellinger?
Here.
Councilwoman Behringer?
Here.
Councilman Singleton?
Here.
And Councilman Matthews?
Here.
And at that, at this point, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council Member Phil Matthews who will follow up with the invocation. Mr. Matthews.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join in our prayer. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we've come before you tonight, Lord, seeking wisdom as always to make good decisions as we represent our town and the citizens. Lord, we pray for our country, we're going through some serious things right now, but we know that you're in charge. We pray for the world as a whole with all the turmoil that's going on. Lord, lift up our military, guide them, bring them all back home safe, and lift up those that are sick and cannot be out and about, Lord, and just, we just pray for healing on them. Lord, we lift these prayers up to you, in the name of Jesus I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. And just a free 30-second commercial for the Memorial Day service that'll be held Monday morning at Lake Vincent Park. Mr. Matthews will be one of the featured speakers along with others and it was fantastic last year. If you get a chance, come on by about 9:30 and you'll hear more about that.
You'll get a good seat.
Yeah, get at nine, maybe 8:30, get a real good seat. Thank you. We move to the petitions and comments section and it's always important to read this little disclaimer or description of what this is. This portion of the meeting is to receive comments from the public on items that are not included in this agenda regarding matters germane to town policies or business or subjects within the Town Council's real or apparent jurisdiction. Individuals or group spokespersons must sign up with the Town Clerk prior to the start of the meeting. The council is interested in hearing your concerns but may not take action or deliberate on a subject matter brought up during the petitions and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. And I'll ask the Town Attorney here if anyone has signed up to speak.
No one has signed up to speak.
No one has signed up to speak, thank you very much. So we'll move on to Section E of the agenda here and that is the adoption of the agenda. Could I get a motion or a comment from a council member about the agenda?
To move.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Matthews makes the motion, Mr. Singleton makes the second to adopt the agenda. I would ask that all of the council members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. And motion passes unanimously, thank you. Section F, there are no presentation scheduled for tonight's meeting, so we move next to the consent agenda. And just for general information, these are items that the council has worked on over the last few weeks with input from staff. Most seem to be pretty unanimous, pretty routine, things that have been aired to the public, so we don't really talk about them again. We just wish to see if any member, any council member sees anything that should be brought off the consent agenda for further discussion or another action or to be removed from the council. Does any council member have any motion to accept this agenda, consent agenda, or to move any?
To move.
Mr. Matthews moves to adopt the consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Singleton. I would ask council members that we have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor of doing so, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Hearing none is unanimous, that passes, thank you very much. Now for the good part, we move into the public hearing and we have one of each type tonight, so you need to understand the rules and regulations, it's very important. The first one, the first public hearing we have tonight involves a special use permit which requires a quasi judicial hearing. This is a little different than most of our public hearings that are more of legislative or input oriented. These require the testifiers be sworn in and we also have to read the disclaimer on this too. Each council member is required to disclose whether he or she has a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change, had any ex parte communications, any close familial business or other associational relationship with an affected person or a financial interest in the outcome of the case. This is a fact finding hearing and only competent material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive is allowed. Only expert witnesses based on training and experience may testify to the impacts on property values, traffic safety, or noise levels. Council members must disclose discussions pertaining to the case or any information received outside of the hearing. The property was considered at prior council meetings in conjunction with rezoning and special use permit decisions. Do any council members have any additional disclosures of ex parte communications? Okay, I'm getting, I'm getting those, that's good. Okay. All persons wishing to testify or provide comments must be sworn in, usually by the Town Clerk, but Town Clerk is absent, so it will be sworn in by the mayor. Please proceed to the center, the podium in the center of the room to be sworn in and I'll come down and administer an oath. Okay, the staff report is offered as evidence in this case and will be accepted into the record unless an objection is raised by the applicant or another person withstanding. The occasion tonight is a special use permit modification related to the Creech Road solar project out there. And our presenter who's going to explain this from the town staff, Mr. Joe Linsky.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Good to see you this evening. I'm here to present SUP SP 1505 M 2301 Creech Road Solar. This is a modification to an existing special use permit from 2015 that was approved for a solar farm in two different areas. And the modification is to reduce the size of the property that the approval was originally for. So the applicant and owner is Dogwood Creek Landing, Dogwood Creek Land Holdings LLC. And as I mentioned, the modification is to the original special use permit which is located at 816 Delta Street. And the modification would reduce the area of the site to which the special use permit would apply. The zoning for this property is rural agricultural and the current uses are the solar farm and vacant property, that most of that vacant area is where it is proposed to be reduced or taken off of the SUP. The original special use permit was on August 10th, 2015, and around this area there's multifamily A, R4, and RA zoning districts. A tier-two rezoning case for a residential subdivision is currently being reviewed by the Technical Review Committee for which the relinquished and unused area would be These are five of the specific site conditions from the original special use permit approval related to the stream crossing and the documentation they need for that, as well as documentation for the decommissioning. The applicants hosted two neighborhood meetings as required per the UDO. The first was on October 30th of last year and then most recently on April 25th. And they had 11 and four people in attendance and the full packets, or full meeting information should be in your packets. So here's the site in consideration. I think I can, if you can, oh, apologies. You'll see there are the two existing solar farm areas. The entrance on Creech Road is going to remain and nothing is really truly changing on the site. Everything is proposed to remain the same except the property line. You'll see the hatch area in the bottom left corner is the area to be relinquished or transferred. So the site acreage is going to go from 62.75 acres to 39.97. No buildings or anything are being proposed, simply moving the property line here. Stormwater and utilities, it's not with any water shed protection area, there's no changes or connections being proposed. Landscaping and buffers, so with the property line moving, the, you know, the, some of our percentages here are changing, but the, after review, they are meeting all the requirements per the UDO for landscaping, so that includes retaining the minimum and going above, still above the minimum tree coverage. The street trees are remaining the same and the perimeter buffers do change ever so slightly, but they do, they do retain the minimum and exceed the minimum in several areas, so along the new property line, the 15-foot type A perimeter buffer will be required there along the RA zoning from the area that will be relinquished. Lighting and parking, these will both remain as they were, nothing's being proposed new for either. From our transportation plan, Creech Road Solar will continue to utilize its existing access drives off Creech and Delta Street. Creech Road being an NC DOT maintained street and Delta Street is a private drive, no new points of access are being created nor new public infrastructure. So the site does have a FEMA designated flood plain. As mentioned, they did receive their proper permits through the state previously for the work to cross that. And TRC finds that the revised plan continues to satisfy all applicable regulations and There are two conditions with the new property line and the new site size. If the property line results in insufficient vegetation in the perimeter buffers by current UDO standards, new plantings will be required. And second, an exempt plat must be submitted to the planning department following special use permit approval. You will see, there should have been at your seats a, the motion to approve or deny. The wording was slightly modified after consulting with the town staff, so it was changed ever so slightly from what was originally in your packet, but you should be able to see both of the motions on there for consideration. I can take any questions, if not, I'll ask the applicant to come up.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes, Mr. Linsky, so as you stated earlier, they want to change this so they can make a residential subdivision supplemental, which is, you said before, technical review, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And that's for 205 townhomes, correct?
The, I, I have to check the number, I'm not entirely sure on the number, but it is around there.
I went on our activity map and found this, I just wanted to make sure that we're, they want to do this to add more residential subdivisions, 205 to Creech Road, that's the proposal.
That's correct, for that proposal, yeah, this is separate from that of course, but yes.
Right, thank you.
From the applicant and they will come back and say if we have some more questions.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. My name is Erin Catlett. I'm an attorney with Fox Rothschild. My address is 434 Fayetteville Street, Suite 2800 in Raleigh. I'm here today on behalf of the applicant, Dogwood Creek Land Holdings LLC, the owner of the Creech Road solar facility, in connection with the quasi judicial hearing and special use permit application for a modification to the previously granted special use permit. Thank you to staff and Mr. Linsky for the staff report and the presentation, providing a great overview of the application and the request before you today. A special permit, use permit for the solar facility was approved in 2015 and subsequently constructed and has been in operation since that time. The applicant comes before you tonight proposing to amend that original special use permit to remove just a small portion of the property that has not been developed for solar purposes. The solar facility is approximately, actually, let me move forward, sorry, thanks. The solar facility is approximately 62.75 acres and the solar operations where the solar panels are located occur on approximately 39.97 of the 62.75 acres. There is approximately 22.78 acre portion of the property that is vacant, where there is no solar panel, there are no solar panels and no plans for additional solar panels. What's before you tonight is an application to amend that previously approved SUP to remove that portion of acreage that is not being utilized by the solar facility. There is no proposed change to the operations in the farm, to the solar farm as it is already existing and operating today. Joining me today are some experts to provide testimony to you all tonight and evidence in connection with the special use permit application. Those experts will provide evidence to the required findings per the UDO. First with, we'll hear from tonight is Harrison Cole. He is with Cypress Creek Renewables and Dogwood Creek Land Holdings. Mr. Cole has extensive experience in the solar and utility industry. Mr. Cole will share a bit about the operations at the Creech solar facility and provide testimony that the proposed use will not endanger the public health and safety, that adverse impacts will be mitigated, and provide adequate assurances of continuing maintenance on the site. We'll also hear from Mr. Jeremy Keeney, the engineer with the project. Mr. Keeney is a vice president and principal at Morris and Ritchie Associates of North Carolina. He is a North Carolina professional engineer with more than 20 years of experience in the land development industry. He will provide testimony as to the specifics of the revised special use permit site and overall compliance with the town's UDO and related plans and policies and the transportation and utility facilities and services that are, that they are sufficient for the development. Also here tonight is Mr. Rich Kirkland. Mr. Kirkland is an expert in the real estate industry. Mr. Kirkland is an MAI certified appraiser with Kirkland Associates who has extensive experience in real estate and the real estate industry both here in Garner and in the triangle, as well as extensive experience evaluating solar farms throughout the country. He will provide testimony on the impacts of solar farms on real estate values for the adjoining and abutting properties, compatibility with the surrounding area, and consistency with the town's plans and policies. And we will also hear from Mr. Chris Sandifer, an expert in the solar industry. Mr. Sandifer is an engineer with, excuse me, Mr. Sandifer is a graduate electrical engineer and North Carolina licensed professional engineer with more than 30 years of experience in the electric utility and engineering industry, including many years with Duke Energy. Mr. Sandifer will provide testimony that the solar farm use will not endanger the public health and safety, the use as a solar farm is compatible with the adjacent uses, approximate neighborhood farm, excuse me, and the approximate neighborhood, and that any significant adverse impacts resulting from the use will be mitigated. I tender all of these experts to you as experts in their respective fields. We really do want to be respectful of your time, so we will do our best to efficiently address the required special use permit standards. Once the experts have shared their testimony, I will come back up and summarize for you the findings. Thanks. We'll start tonight with Mr. Harrison Cole. I submit Mr. Harrison to you as an expert on the topics he will discuss.
My name is Harrison Cole. My address is 45 Banks Avenue, Asheville, North Carolina. I'm with Cypress Creek Renewables, the owner of Dogwood Creek, which currently owns the land at the Creech Solar Farm. I've been with Cypress Creek for about a little over seven years now. I'm a graduate of NC State University with a degree in environmental technology and management and a minor in renewable energy assessment. Cypress Creek has been operating in North Carolina since 2014. Our flagship office is actually in the RTP area in Durham and, excuse me, where we have about 100 full-time employees in the office and several more that work remotely in the area. We also have a 24/7, 365 manned operations center where we perform all of our operations and maintenance for several hundred projects through both North and South Carolina and throughout the country. And so we're deeply rooted in North Carolina and want to continue doing business here. In my role for CCR, for Cypress Creek, I serve, like I said, as the associate director over the southeast and primarily work in the Duke Energy market of North and South Carolina. Our company has built several projects, has built hundreds of projects of this size throughout the Carolinas and throughout the country, where we continue to be the, one of the main players in North Carolina and bring great economic opportunities to counties that look for additional tax revenue. So for about this project, like Erin said, the Creech Solar Farm received its special use permit in 2015. It started operation in 2016 and has been operating there ever since. We had, the size of the project is five megawatts AC, so that services about 600 homes or so, give or take. And the way that's done is we sell, we take the energy that we produce on site and send it to Duke's electrical grid and then Duke disperses the energy to where the energy is needed. And so the, the operations and maintenance that we've done on the facility have been pretty minimal. We've had typically, you know, what we do is vegetation maintenance and then preventative maintenance. That is anything from if we have a crack in one of the panels or if there is a, something that's going, that we need to address with the driveway. All that is done in-house with our office in Durham and so if there's ever anything that is going awry at the farm, there's a number that's posted on the fence, you can give us a call and a person will answer 24/7, like I said. So the farm continues to be, like I said, in operation, operating safely. We do have about two technicians that visit about once a month, again, for preventive maintenance and some vegetation control to make sure everything still looks nicely out there. And so because of that, we have very minimal traffic. We have one, one or two pickup trucks that go once a month and that's all the traffic that goes out to site, just to make sure everything is running smoothly. We do enjoy being a local neighbor to the Town of Garner. You know, we enjoy working in these North Carolina communities. I'm from Greensboro, I really enjoy working in Guilford County and working with their staff and their council to, to bring these kind of projects as well. And so like I said, we've, we're operating over 100 solar farms in North Carolina, a few have had any issues and we, you know, all the neighbors that we've spoken to consider it to be a good neighbor because there's no additional lighting, sound, or traffic compared to what the use might be. And so because of that, I would testify that the proposed use will not endanger public health or safety, any significant adverse impacts resulting from the use will be mitigated or offset, including impacts on the natural environment, and adequate assurances of continuing maintenance will be provided. Thank you, and let me know if there's any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Up next, we will hear from Mr. Keeney. I submit Mr. Keeney to you as an expert on the topics he will discuss in the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council Members. My name is Jeremy Keeney. I'm a licensed professional engineer and licensed land surveyor in the state of North Carolina. I'm with Morris and Ritchie Associates. We are located at 530 Hinton Pond Road in Knightdale, North Carolina. I'm a vice president and principal in charge of our North Carolina operations for Morris and Ritchie. We have engineering and land surveying offices up and down the East Coast. My role through this process is I've been helping the applicant work with the town staff and drafting the plans and things and some of the communications back and forth to get, to make sure that the proposed plans and how we're presenting it meets the UDO and comprehensive plan. I have a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering from NC State University. I also have a Master's in Engineering Management and a Master's in Business Administration. Again, as I said, I've been a North Carolina professional land surveyor since 2009 and a professional engineer in North Carolina since 2012. This is, as we've been mentioning, this is an existing solar farm that's been in operation. You know, the intent here is to remove some of the special use conditions from the vacant area to be able to move forward. My role in this process, again, has been working on these plans to help with staff. So we've worked with staff to address any comments and corrections to make sure we are meeting the UDO and the comprehensive plan. You know, through this process, so what we're proposing does not include any new buildings, so no new buildings proposed. As staff and others have testified as well, you know, open space is not required. You know, we're meeting the stormwater requirements, tree canopies, landscaping, the landscape buffers, you know, we're continuing to have the perimeter buffers around most of the property as is today, which exceed the current standards. And then along the new property line, we're also providing a buffer that meets the current UDO standards. Parking.
To be either rezoned, or annexed, or get a special use permit, et cetera. Is that correct, Mr. Linsky?
That's correct, yeah. That acreage, that 22, and a little bit of change acreage, will have to come back to the board for approval for a separate project.
So, we're trying not to get distracted by what that might be. That would be a separate process at a different time.
Correct.
Okay. That being said, maybe this is a good time to ask the council members if they have other questions for either Mr. Linsky or our applicant. I'll just look down this way and see if there's any other questions.
I have a question for the applicant, whoever wants to answer. So really, what we're actually discussing is a modification of the special use permit.
That's correct.
Not a new use for what's there, but a modification to the permit.
Yes.
It's already been entered into evidence of what the future proposed use of the new parcel will be. It was presented in this hearing as to what that would be, and that there's an application pending. So, the change of the S U P changes the use of that lot. And so, we've multiple experts testify tonight that the modification is consistent with the comprehensive plan, correct?
Yes.
So, our comprehensive plan on page 43 designates that entire existing parcel as preserved natural areas, parks, and recreation. That's on page 43. And on page 61, under our development and change intensity, has an area to preserve, which says, "Areas to preserve safeguard rural and environmentally sensitive lands and provide meaningful opportunities to link residents with parks, recreation facilities, and nature." And says, "Future development is discouraged in these locations to protect open space, natural areas, and rural view sheds in the community." It doesn't sound like the modification makes it consistent with the comprehensive plan.
The modification at this point is to pull the property out. There is not a definite specific plan for it to move forward. Yes, there has been something proposed. Yes, you're... Correct.
It's not just a hypothetical. It's been submitted and is currently in the workflow to be this new use. So, I think that is relevant to this hearing because the future use is known. So, it's not just a conversion to vacant land with a mysterious future. It's a conversion to vacant land with a very specific future.
Yes, and there are so many steps that have to happen before that would actually occur, that it would be changed to that. What we are asking today is that it's pulled out and it would be vacant land. It would not be used for that purpose at this point in time. In order for it to go forward and to become the proposed use under the plan that has been submitted, like you're talking about, that has been talked about, yes, it will have to come back before this board, and you would have to hear it and approve it. But at this time, they could decide they don't want to sell it. They could decide that they want, like the mayor said, use it for a different purpose. It could ultimately end up being something that's described in the comprehensive plan. And at the time, if it does come back for rezoning, it would not meet the current state of the comprehensive plan, as you're suggesting, absolutely. The proposed development, the proposed townhome development would not.
...consistent with the comprehensive plan, or make a modification that could potentially make it not consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Could. Could, is I think operative word there. Could make it inconsistent. At this time, it would just be vacant land. And again, for any change to happen to move forward, it would have to come back before this board.
The only other question I have is, there is sort of an issue with related transportation and the impacts of transportation of issuing the modification from a non-traffic generating use to a potential traffic generating use. And so, that is sort of in the balance too with not knowing, making the modification without any sort of presentation as to the effects, potential effects of traffic impacts, with the knowledge that there is a project in the pipeline with the town.
And again, when that project comes back before you, if and when that project comes back before you, that would be the time to determine the traffic impacts. The... What we have heard today is that the solar farm operations are not going to change. It's going to be approximately two vehicles per month coming to the property. The vacant land will not, again, be developed at this time. There's... It will not be used. It will not be used until something else were to come back before you.
Right. That's all the questions have.
Questions over here?
I like the way you say, keep saying could. You don't spend all the money on a tier-two rezoning case if you're just going to hypothetically come in here and send it where it's already before our technical review committee and say that could happen. It's been on our development activity map for months.
Right.
I've seen it. This is not a could. This is what you choose. And you said there are many steps to take place before that could happen, and this is the first step. And if this first step is not modified, then the rest of it ain't happening. And that's the way that we should move forward because of the... You're not doing anything illegal, I'm not saying you're hiding behind a curtain here and not the worst of us, but this is what's happening. We had to pull it out here and say this. Sure, the solar farm meets all that. We approved it in 2015 or 2015, right? I was on the council. I was probably unanimous. You know, it was a solar farm, it's can sit there and be quiet. But what's proposed is not going to sit there and be quiet. And 205 townhomes on the same narrow driveway with no improvements to a road that only has two, traffic twice a month now, that impacts how we look at this. And this is the first step in trying for that to happen. And I'm just sorry, we've got enough issues on Creek Road as it is, and all this proposal's going to do is create more heartache and headache. Heartache for the local residents and headaches for us and the staff. So, I see what you're saying, that the solar farm meets the requirements of the S U P, but all we're doing is shrinking the land to allow you to make a residential subdivision application, which is already before us, and it's a tier-two, which is a detailed plan, and money has been spent with engineers and traffic engineers and landscape folks and everything. So, you know, let's just take the cover off everything and say what it is what it is.
And I hear what you're saying. And I also want to point out that the applicants are different in those two situations. So, the applicant here is the solar farm developer and operator, and they're asking to do this to their land, independent of someone that may come in and purchase the land and may move forward with developing. And I do understand what you're saying. I understand your concern, but I want us to focus on what the question here tonight is, is whether this meets the special use permit requirements.
Mr. Comment?
And what I'm worried about is that right there. There's the site plan. That's what I'm worried about, the 205 townhomes. Because one step leads to the next. This is the first step, as you stated. That's what I'm concerned about, allowing that to happen. No... Ill feelings toward the solar company because they're, again, doing what they're doing. But you keep saying could, and could's going to be would, and going to be someone's going to move forward with the proposal.
And again, that will come back before you, and you all have a choice at that point how to move forward.
Have a choice now, too.
Yeah, just a question and a comment. Far as understanding what we're doing here, that's a whole totally different project. This could come... What you're saying is correct. Do you guys have a vested interest in this potential development coming in, or is this... You have nothing to do with that?
They are not involved in the future development, other than they own the property. And if they were to move forward selling it, they would sell it. But no, they are not involved in the development. From what I understand, they are not at all involved in the development.
Okay. All right.
That's the value of property in 2015 and the value of property in 2024, in selling the property.
Question. And in reference to what's been stated here, for a point of clarification, before we can be clear, we're looking at two separate items. One is the S U P for this particular solar, Creek Road Solar, to make that modification to the surveys primarily. And the other one, which is tier, in review, is a mutually exclusive project itself. So, we're looking at two separate things, but maybe convoluted into one, thinking that maybe one impacts the other. I can understand that, that concern, that concern there. But however, these are mutually exclusive projects that we're looking at, and one that will come to us inevitably to be viewed independently of what's happening here.
Correct. Yes, that is exactly correct.
Comment. I was not on council in this special use permit. But my understanding of special use permits are that they're granted for that use and undergo the rigor of a hearing and all this environmental review and all this other stuff with the expectation that this is the scale and scope and future impacts of the project. This is how, this is what this property is going to do. The modification that is being proposed, again, in light of vacant land becoming anything else, other than what was originally allowed in the special use permit, is, has impacts that are not documented as being mitigated. You're not proposing that it stay open land, right? There's not a proposal to say, "We're just going to take off the special use permit and leave it vacant land, and now we've... There are no hazards to mitigate or impacts to mitigate." We have in evidence a potential future in higher and more intense use. And what's not being presented, even... It's almost worse that there's not a... That there is a project. It'd be better for you there wasn't a project, or worse, because then you're trying to mitigate unknowns, but you're not even bringing to us the known negative impacts of what's in the pipeline to say, "This is how this will be mitigated," versus this static special use permit and property we have in place that is meeting everything as is, period. So, it... There's a lot of missing information as to what the impacts are to be mitigated by modifying the special use permit.
It is not... The development would have to come back before you to show you what would be mitigated. At this point, when the property comes out, it will just be vacant.
I understand what you're saying, but it not doing the modification maintains its consistency with the comprehensive plan. And those two sections I mentioned, that no one said, it... No one's presented evidence that any future different use will be consistent, or the current use is completely consistent.
And again, when it becomes vacant land, there could be other uses for it. And yes, there is a proposed development, and I understand where you're coming from.
It's vacant land now.
That's correct.
We're not talking about the vacancy of the land. We're talking about the use of the land. So, it's already vacant land that has a use that was issued and granted by its previous or existing special use permit. It can stay vacant land under the existing special use permit, too, and then we... There are no harms to mitigate, in accordance with what's aligned in the special use permit.
Sure. And we also, we don't know what could be developed from here. It's possible that the solar farm company decides to hang on to it or has a different use. We don't know at this point in time. And again, anything would have to come back before you. Would it be okay for me to go through my summary real quick? Okay. As you know, for a quasi-judicial hearing for a special use permit, if we, as the applicant, have presented competent substantial material evidence that the standards have been met, then there is a prima facie entitlement to the permit, and it must be issued. So, quickly, I'd like to summarize our evidence presented to you tonight. A special use permit allowing the use of the property as a solar facility was approved in 2015 by this board. As you have heard, the solar farm was built according to that special use permit from 2015 and has been operating since. The modification to the special use permit is only to remove that portion of vacant land. That is not to be developed as part of the solar farm. As to the findings of fact, the proposed use will not endanger the public health or safety. The evidence in the staff report and from witnesses indicate the solar farm meets the required U D O standards. As you heard from Mr. Sandifer, solar farms do not endanger the public health or safety of local residents. And as you heard from Mr. Cole, the solar farm will continue to operate as it has since it was originally approved in 2015. The... There has been no competent material evidence presented tonight that the proposed modification to the S U P would endanger the public health or safety. The proposed use will not substantially injure the value of the adjoining and abutting property. As you heard from our real estate expert, Mr. Kirkland, solar farms do not, and in this case, will not substantially injure the value of the adjoining or abutting property. There was no competent evidence provided that the proposed use will substantially injure value of adjoining or abutting property. If the completed... If completed as proposed, the development will comply with all of the requirements of this ordinance. And again, there was no competent evidence presented that the solar farm does not comply with the requirements. The proposed use is consistent with the town's adopted plans and the purpose and intent of the U D O. As you heard from staff, Mr. Keeney and Mr. Kirkland, the solar farm use is consistent with the town's U D O policies and plans. A solar farm is permitted with a special use permit in the rural agricultural zoning. The inclusion of the use in the zoning district, even where the special use permit is required, creates a presumption that the use is in harmony and conforms with the town's U D O plans and policies. This board made the same finding in 2015, and there's been no competent evidence provided that the proposed use is inconsistent with the town's plans. The proposed use is compatible with the adjacent uses and proximate neighborhood in terms of building scale, site design, buffering, screening, and operating characteristics. The solar farm was approved and constructed and is operated at the site, making it compatible with surrounding uses. As you heard from Mr. Kirkland, the solar farm use is compatible with the area. There is no competent evidence provided that the use will not be compatible with the adjacent uses and proximate neighborhood. Letter F, any significant adverse impacts resulting from the use will be mitigated or offset, including the impacts on the natural environment. As you heard from Mr. Sandifer, there is no adverse impacts from the use as a solar farm or vacant land. As you heard from Mr. Cole, there have been no adverse impacts with the use as it has now been operating for many years. There's no anticipated change to the solar farm operations, and thus, no expected adverse impacts to occur. This board made the same finding in issuing the special use permit in 2015. There's been no competent evidence provided that there are any adverse impacts from the proposed use as a solar farm or vacant land. The public safety, transportation, and utility facilities and services will be available to serve the subject property while maintaining sufficient levels of service for existing development. As you heard from Mr. Keeney, the solar farm does not currently use, nor will the modification require any use of utility facilities or additional services from the town. There's no change in the access points, and no additional access points are proposed, and the solar farm will maintain the same level of visitors to the site as it currently does. There's no competent evidence provided that there is a lack of public safety, transportation, and utility facilities and services available to serve the property. And finally, adequate assurances of continuing maintenance have been provided. As you heard from Mr. Cole, there are no anticipated changes in the operation, and thus, continued maintenance will remain as it has during the current operation since 2015. There's been no competent evidence provided that there would not be continuing maintenance provided. We, as the applicant, have presented competent substantial material evidence that the standards for the special use permit have been met, just as it was met in 2015 when this was originally approved. There has been no competent substantial material evidence presented to the contrary. Therefore, there is a prima facie entitlement to the permit, and we ask that you would respectfully, excuse me, request that you would approve the special use permit. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to recognize any individuals who have signed up to speak. Ms. Jones, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No, additional individuals have signed up. So, everyone who signed up has testified.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, at this point, then, we will close the public hearing, and we'll look to our council members over here to see if there's a motion to deal with this particular request. Is there a motion?
I find that the proposed use as a modification and application S U P, S P 1505 N 2301, does not meet one or more of the town's criteria of special permit as identified in Article 4.7, 4. D, as stated clearly by Councilmember Dellinger, having it currently does meet the comprehensive growth plan, long-range plan, but the modification changes that. With said land, that 22.7 acres, that would be removed, and it would dramatically affect and have a potential impact on the surrounding properties, as they are in a much more sparsely developed area. That's what could be coming, could be the key word, as we kept hearing could. So, I knew that we did not propose it, because it's the first step in a issue for residents and for the town.
Thank you, Mr. Singleton. There's a motion to deny, is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
There's a motion, and there's a second. And that being the case, is there some discussion related to this motion?
I think it's an interesting situation to make the modification from an existing special use permit that is currently functioning consistently with our comprehensive plan, yet there's a modification that then puts that immediately in jeopardy. And I haven't seen presented any evidence of mitigation of any future impacts that may come along with this modification. Even if it's unknown, vacant land comes with a certain set of impacts, potential impacts, and it's hard for me to see how any information has been presented to the council on how the modification and its future impacts would be mitigated against, and puts it in peril of being consistent. So, on item four, that we're supposed to consider with consistency with current transportation plan and other adopted plans, and number six, mitigating adverse impacts, I don't find that there's been sufficient evidence presented in this hearing. That's my only comment.
I would like to say that what I believe has transpired in my mind is that we have a tier-two project that has been presented for technical review, which is possibly complicating this particular project in that there is an anticipated use of the resurveying or the carving out of this property, which is being imposed upon this request in such a matter of... The request itself, in my opinion, is in line with the current special use. However, because there's another proposed tier-two project that has not been considered by the council, not having been seen by the council, we don't know what's going on with it. It is one that is, I would say, impacting this discussion because they're being conflated into this particular project, to say that because of what may happen with a tier-two zoning, which we haven't seen, which is going through review, will be negatively impacting what we are saying tonight, which means that, in my mind, that that project, if and when it comes to us, we make the decision whether to approve that one based upon its own evidence that comes before us, and not necessarily because of what this one is being proposed. If we did not have that tier-two zoning coming before us, then this within itself would be... Would clearly stand, as it does now, in my mind, stands on its own merits.
A very brief comment. And I understand exactly where you're coming from, Mr. Vance, and I think if it came to us without any plan, I would ask even... I would have even more questions to ask about. What is... Why are you doing this? Why are you asking for this modification? What are going to be the impacts and repercussions of carving out this parcel and removing the special use permit constraints that were previously applied? So, it's semi-relevant that there's actually a plan in the pipeline, because the question still remains, what is the plan for that vacant land? And there's not been any sort of information given to us that mitigates any potential impacts of modifying the special use permit. So, I think you're right. They are two very separate issues, and I don't think we should be making the decision based on another project that has not come before us. But even the conversion of this to just vacant land by modification of the S U P raises a lot of questions around, okay, what is the intent? What are the risks that need to be mitigated against? And there's not been information provided, in my opinion, to show that risk will be mitigated. Turning some of the vacant land creates its own risk of future development. That's just even a blanket risk. So, that's my two cents. I would make it clear that I'm not basing my decision on the specific plan in the pipeline, per se, but just that I don't find that the modification's consistent.
Other comments or questions from council at this point?
The question that we can't ask, and they can't state because it's not tied directly to this particular hearing, is, does Dogwood Creek Land Holdings, LLC have any type of letter of intent or memorandum of understanding or a conditional contract that this is the first step in a future land sale of the 22.78 acres that they want to modify? That's a key question that they don't have to answer, but that's what's here. This is the first step in the process. Whether they agree with it or not, that's the first step in the process, is to get that modified so a land sale and a land purchased by a future developer can take place.
Okay. We've heard a lot of testimony. This is a little different than the standard S U P. It is a little confusing. The motion has been made and seconded and had a discussion. The motion was to deny the proposed modification. We're going to take a vote. I'm going to ask for a roll call vote to make clear who's voting for what. And I'm going to start with Mr. Matthews down here and ask if you're in favor of or opposed.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
Thank you. And I've listened to both sides of this, because I agree with Mr. Vance. We've got two separate issues here. One is what's before us. And basically, we're talking about just moving the property line, basically, and to make it smaller. And that's technically what's before us to vote on. I know we can deny it. And in the other situations that have been brought to us in regards to this, we do have the authority. We will deal with that if it does come. And so, that's what we're elected to do. So, I guess my... If I vote yes, I'm just going for this what's before us right now.
Okay. So, what's before us now is a draft of a motion to deny this modification, and I would be a vote to deny it, and they would be to not accept this motion to deny.
Well, I see both sides, but I'm voting just in regards to what's in front of us. So, in that regard, I would vote nay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Singleton.
Aye.
Ms. Behringer?
Aye.
Mr. Dellinger?
Aye.
Mr. Vance?
Nay.
Okay. We have three ayes and a nay, so that means that the motion to deny has passed. Okay?
The three ayes and two nays. You got it?
It's three out of two, yes.
Got it.
There were three ayes in favor of denying the motion and two opposed.
Good.
Right. Just to make it clear. So, it does pass three to two to deny the motion to change, to withdraw that S U P, to modify that S U P. Okay? So, that concludes the vote on that particular project, and we will move along after this. If you need to take a second to readjust, we'll come back to the public hearing on the recommended budget for fiscal year '25. Okay? And as we get readjusted, I will read the intro disclaimer to this public hearing, which is a little different. This public hearing is a legislative hearing, which does not require sworn testimony. However, persons interested in speaking, including the applicant, must sign up with the town attorney. Town staff will present a brief presentation, followed by persons who wish to comment. On the proposed budget will be recognized to speak. Council requests groups of individuals with the same position to designate a representative to speak for the group. And this is the second of two public hearings related to the budget. And so, we will be here in this primarily for public comment and for informational purposes, and we'll recognize Ms. Warren as our budget director to give us a presentation.
Welcome. Good evening, mayor and members of council. Like you said, we are here to hold the second public hearing on the FY '25 recommended budget. Just a reminder of where we are. Here we are at the second meeting, as you mentioned. The first public hearing was April 2nd of this year, and then on May 7th, you heard the recommended budget presented by interim town manager Jody Miller. So, here we are. We're nearing the end. So, this is the second budget hearing. Just a reminder of where residents and citizens can submit their comments. There's a Q R code there. Comments that have been submitted, there were, I believe, five provided to you in your packet. There were another five that came in over the weekend that were left at seats for your review. We'll continue to provide those public comments to you as we receive them. I also want to point out our budget resources. So, we have a whole page dedicated to the FY '25 recommended budget, where members of the public can find the video that staff put together. That was so well done, and I think you all really enjoyed that. So, that's there to help explain... So that's there to help explain things to our residents about what's included in the budget, so I would point folks to that. There's also the link for the public comment form, a link to review the current budget document, as well as the manager's message. So all of these resources can be found on our website under budget. With that, we can open the public hearing.
Okay, that was my question. That's your presentation. At this point, do council members have any questions for our budget director? And I think you mentioned that we have an all-day work session on Thursday to look at the budget. It is open to the public, as well as the comments that have been submitted. People are welcome to come and attend and learn and speak again there. Okay? And at this point, I would like to see if we want to recognize some individuals who have signed up to speak. And I'll ask Ms. Jones, do we have anyone who signed up to speak?
Yes, we have two individuals. The first is Rex Whaley.
Mr. Whaley, if you would come up and state your name and address for the record, and we'd be glad to hear your input.
Thank you all. Rex Whaley, 102 Pine Way Street here in Garner. It's kind of like Groundhog Day when we do the budget, I guess, to y'all because I show up each time. But I appreciate y'all giving me the opportunity to at least come and make some comments. And I won't take very long. I just got like three or four topics that I want to hit on and one in particular. And I just want to thank you for dealing with the issue on the budget. I know there's it's a big challenge every year, and there's always a lot of demands for money and not enough money to go around, and I certainly understand that. And I wish you a lot of luck in making the decisions as you as you move forward. I wanted to just provide a perspective, as I have in the past years, just from a resident, when I pick up the budget, see the budget, and pick up the budget document and go through it, some of the things that jump out to me and just point those out. Again, just trying to give a different perspective of the document. And I would say, and because it ties into the the budget process, you know, when we look at development, it seems like, you know, we say growth, we can't, you know, affording growth and all. It seems like things are out of kilter because somebody has land, they sell it, they make money. Developer buys the property, development make money, and the residents sit there and we get a bill. So there's just something out of kilter with this process, and I just hope we can start taking a better look at development as we move forward. One comment I wanted to make, I know I saw where the parks, penny for parks, the 900,000, and I'm a big user of parks, I'm not opposed to funding for parks, but I knew that was part of the old rate, so I understood that it would be revenue neutral and it would remain around 600,000. And I only mention that because if you're making it a 900,000 based on the new value, you're basically taking 300,000 availability away that could have funded other things. For example, the police officers had a that were denied or a couple of the public works positions. So that that jumped out at me. And I wanted to recognize Ms. Warren for the work she did. That was a very good document this year in the capital process. I was really impressed going through that and understanding what we're doing in that area. And then all the grants that the town staff, I think it was about $6 million, so that's there ought to be commended for that. But the heart of the matter I wanted to get to was the revenue savings plan changed, the eight and a half cent tax increase, not so much from questioning the tax increase, but I want to make sure I understand what we're doing. It sounds, you know, we bounced back between the debt model and the savings plan, and it sounds like this is just kind of combining those two items. So eight and a half cent tax increase to put like 7.7 million. My understanding currently there's about, in the old pennies, about 11 cent going into those two things. There's like 3 million into the debt service and 3 million to the savings plan. And so in my mind, if we're trying to raise seven, that number to 7.7, looks like we only need a penny and a half increase. So I'm not sure how we jump to eight and a half from a penny and a half. And I didn't know if there anyone had any, any, I think I have an idea, but I'm not sure because all I have is a budget document to look through, so I don't have all the details and conversations. But I'm just not sure how we go from 6 million to 7.7 and it requires eight and a half cent. Okay. Well, when I look at it, and I had looked at some of the information that Davenport had provide, it looks like to me that 6 million that's currently in there is going away. You know, there was about 3 million that was approved through tax increases for the 13 bond and the 21 bond that amounted to about 5 or 6 cents, the $3 million. There's about $3 million that's going towards debt through the savings plan that even if you had done nothing this year, 3 million would have gone into the savings plan because it builds up and it's recurring money. And that's about 5 or 6 cents. So that's where I come up with 11 cents. So it seems like that money's just disappearing. So I don't know where it's going. And if you're now going to say, well, we're going to raise taxes 8 and 1/2 cent to now backfill that money, you're basically taxing residents twice for debt money they've already paid taxes on and agreed to, some of it through bond votes, and now you're starting over. You're saying, well, just forget that. We're just pushing that aside, and now to get 7.7, we're going to raise taxes 8 and 1/2 cent.
Does anybody on staff touch on this? And the eight and a half, which is proposed, and the revenue saving plans, it is coincidence the same number proposed, but there were several different proposals on tax rates, and they all were at 8 and 1/2. There were several less. I'll say that. So if y'all could touch on that, just the number doesn't need to be the same, it does work the majority of the time.
So the proposed, the proposed budget includes 8 and 1/2 cent over revenue neutral. The proposed budget also includes that of the 52 cents that is proposed, 8 and 1/2 of that goes towards the revenue savings plan. So they are two separate numbers. It's not 8 and 1/2 cent increase for the revenue savings plan. It's just the way that we've modeled the revenue savings plan with these updates that were presented to council at their retreat in February means that of the total tax rate, 8 and 1/2 cents is dedicated to the revenue savings plan to pay for debt service and build capacity for future capital. Then there's the 8 and 1/2 cents above the revenue neutral rate of 43.5 that's paying for new positions, our compensation plan, and a host of other things. So it just so happens that they're the same number.
Well, it looks odd when you see the Davenport data, it shows 8 and 1/2 cent, 7.7 million going into this combined plan.
So it's still the revenue savings plan, we're just funding it differently.
And well, what happened to the 6 million that was already going into the plan?
That's all still going. I don't know that we need to go into this in a public hearing, but we can, we will be going over all of this at the work session on Thursday.
I think that that's a good answer. There are a lot of moving parts here, Mr. Whaley, and you and you have done a great job of assimilating a lot of those and bringing these to our attention and requires more attention. I would invite you to, again, continue this dialogue at the public at the public hearing on Thursday or even before. These are good questions. Mr. Singleton has some of the same questions. We need to be diving into this, and probably between now and Thursday, and Thursday is the time more so than in here, but you've got some excellent questions. Any other comments? Well, let's let the people testify, then we'll come back and have questions. We'll come back and have questions for Ms. Warren. Let's come back and let's let Mr. Whaley finish up, and then we'll have questions to Ms. Warren.
Okay, and I know I've gone over a little bit. The last, I just got a few more final comments. And again, I still don't quite understand where that 6 million went, but maybe on Thursday we can figure that out. I did some, I went out to the Wake County revow site, and it looks like the average for a single-family home access value now is like 374,000. And at 8 and 1/2 cent, that's going to cost taxpayers about $318. And this is on top of the roughly 28 cents we've done in the last few years. So you're looking at about a $700, $800 increase over the last few years. And one reason I mention this, not just because of the increase, but no, we talk about affordable housing. And again, you know, this impacts affordable housing. This is money that people have to pay for housing. So we need to be mindful of that. Not only that, it's their vehicles when they go to register their vehicles, you know, for transportation, you know, we're jacking up that cost. And then the last thing, I'll just leave you, I need about one more minute, just a few stats or data that I looked at when I was comparing the budget. If you go back to 2020 to 2024, 25 with the proposed budget, the core inflation rate's been 17%, which is excludes some items. The general inflation rate, 21%. Garner population, 26%. Tax rate has gone up 41%. Sales tax and other revenues that the town gets has gone up 43%. Permits for fee revenues gone up 75%. Town budget in that five years, five years has doubled from 37 million to 74 million. And the property tax revenue has gone up 130%. So just on the outside looking in, things sort of a little skewed. But again, I appreciate the comments, I wish you well and luck, and maybe I can attend Thursday. And I'm not the smartest person or the sharpest tool in the shed, as they say, but I'm still a little confused on where that 6 million is going.
Thank you, and I think those are astute observations, and it takes it takes a lot of study. I appreciate your patience and your willingness to come and join us again.
I thank you.
And Mr. Whaley, one of the first things you said is about growth not. I remember saying that before the council in the Old Town Hall, that that theory, you know, growth will pay for itself, no, it doesn't. It does not. And everybody else is now waking up to this, particularly in this area, because of the accelerated growth and the accelerated increase in property values, salaries, et cetera, et cetera, expenses. It is exactly right, growth regularly is going to pay for pay for itself, and it's not going to be in a fast rising appraisal area like Wake County, it's just not going to pay for itself.
Yeah, but it just just seems totally unfair, like I said, that the residents get stuck with a bill every year when everybody else is making money. And also, I did want to mention, and I talked about development, I know there were some recent projects that were denied, and so for any of y'all that voted against those new developments, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and Ms. Jones, we had another person signed up to speak tonight.
Yes, sir. Troy Crawford.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Crawford, if you would, state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, I'm Troy Crawford. I reside at 130 Meadow Oak Lane, Garner, which I have lived at since 2019 with my wife. Unlike Mr. Whaley, this is my first time here, so I did want to take an opportunity to introduce myself to a few of you who do not know me, and a few of you do probably more than than you want to. But I have lived in the Garner area since I came home from Old Rex Hospital in 1975. I opened a law office here in 2000, but prior to that, I was an engineering intern in 1996 and 97. We came back here in 2018 when I opened a little company, and we did have to go to the homework environment in 2020 because of COVID. But I am a proud Garnerian, as we say. I love this town, I know y'all do too, and so I do appreciate the opportunity to to speak here. You know, I had the opportunity when I came returned in 2018 to go to any area in the state I wanted to, and I chose Garner. I had free office space in Cary, and I was willing to pay Douglas Ball pretty good rent to be on Aveversboro Road, so I was glad to be able to do that because this is where I live and where I love. But I'll just give you that background, just to say that I would disagree with some of the stuff that was said in the budget presentation, that that budget represents the town values, in the values of our community. To me, it represents the value of a drunk 18-year-old on spring break, not the value of people that I know in this town who are fiscally responsible, who care about their community, but do not think it's fair to spend other people's money the way that our town budget has done. I had some of the same numbers that Mr. Whaley had about what has happened to our town budget. And I remember here when Garner adopted the slogan in the early 2000s, a great place to be. It was a great place to be then when our budget was under control. I don't know why it's had to explode to the point that it has right now. So unfortunately, I am out of town for a graduation event for my son on Thursday, or I would be participating in the event, I hate I cannot make it. So I do challenge everyone here, both staff and also the elected members of the board, to please keep that in mind, that the explosion in our budget is coming at great expense to local residents, some of whom cannot afford this increase taxes, and to local business people. I look at several business people who have opened up with triple net leases, and to think that their tax bill is going to go up 23 and 1/2% is just incomprehensible. I do challenge y'all to understand, this is not free money, this is your neighbor's money, and to act accordingly. Thank you.
Crawford, thank you. Was there anyone else signed up to speak?
No.
Okay. Well, that basically would be the time to close the public hearing. We can get another comment or two. We got we got all day Thursday for the council to be working on this. Any other observations or comments?
If Ms. Warren could just comment in two sentences on the change in the benefit of the change to how we're funding the revenue savings plan with regards to budget projection.
So the way we have changed. Formula driven projection on growth to a dedicated tax rate. So in essence, and we'll review this policy with you on Thursday, that 8 and 1/2 cents will will be dedicated towards the revenue savings plan until the time comes when the council wants to change that amount. So of that total tax rate, 8 and 1/2 cents goes to the revenue savings plan.
Mr. Dellinger, if I could add to that, part of the reason that there's a recommendation for changing our approach to the revenue savings plan is just the way the formula was created, when it was originally created, was very effective, but we've learned over the years that from the from the standpoint of trying to budget every year and do projections, it's difficult because we are having to always go and play catch-up with the way the formula's set up now. Also, just wanting to be more transparent and clear about what those dollars are and how they equate to the tax rate as far as our capital spending with the town. So beyond just the the process for it's easier for staff to project and be able to put that as part of the budget, it's really important that we're clear and transparent with our community about how those dollars are being spent on capital projects.
For debt service, it's for debt service.
It's for debt service and for capital projects. So it funds our capital improvement plan that we set out every year.
Yes, to your point, it's currently paying for debt service, but it's also building future capacity.
Excellent, thank you. Any other observations or comments, Ms. Warren? Okay, thank you. That was good information, there's a lot to it, a lot more to be dealt with. Really appreciate the input, not only from the people who spoke, but from the other folks who sent in comments as well. They are part of the record, they will be looked at in detail. All of you are important contributors to this process. So with that, I think we will close this public hearing and move on to our next item. Thank you. Now, new and old business, Creech Road Transportation update. And this is an exciting one. Again, just to give you a little background, and Ms. Harrison might be prepared to say the same thing, but suddenly Creech Road has gotten more attention in the last few months than it has in the last couple of decades in a way, and rightfully so. There's a lot going on out in that direction, not just in the Garner city limits and ETJ, but in the Raleigh city limits that are very close at hand out there. A lot of projects going on. We had two significant projects come before the council simultaneously recently on Creech Road, and we took two different meetings to hear that in detail. And then we did what we're required to do pretty much, is send it on to the planning commission for further review, further input. Some of the main questions had to do with transportation, demands on the roadway, what's happening to Creech Road, how will people get in and out? We referred it to the planning commission. They agreed early on to set up two different hearings to make sure they could understand what was going on, get plenty of input. And in the meantime, the planning staff, and particularly the engineering staff, has continued to look at that and try to figure out what are the options, what are the issues, what are some possible solutions? And Ms. Harrison has done an excellent, excellent job of preparing a detailed list of options and things to be consideration, things for consideration. of, of options and things to be consideration, things for consideration, and I'll pass it over to you to tell us what you've been doing.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. I think Mr. Mayor covered my first few minutes, so thank you for summing it up for me. So as mentioned, we really just were wanting to take a look, and this is more for public benefit than y'all probably, at what long-term improvements the town has identified in, along the Creech Road corridor, and taking a dive into each of those and providing enough information that we can allow council, council to have some direction on what improvements we're pursuing and how proposed development fits into those improvements and what the short and long-term goals along Creech Road look like. Creech Road is kind of a unique road in that it does make some very important connections on both the northern and southern ends, but to, to, until now, it has remained largely undeveloped. And all of a sudden, it has been discovered, it seems, so we have a lot of proposed development. And thanks to council for being proactive and thinking through those issues early. Everything that we're going to go over here, I know it's a lot of information, and it all comes from the two different documents that were put together and in the council agenda packets from April 16th and then again from today. So if there's anything you would like to look at in further detail, it is all there, but we'll try to talk through it because I know it's, it's a lot to digest. First of all, just want to start with an overview of traffic capacity on Creech Road. I know this is something that we talk about a lot, is what capacity roads have to handle vehicles, and this is where proposed improvements come from on developments. And sometimes it's a little bit hard to reconcile the, the numbers with what we see in real life. So the capacity of Creech Road is determined by really the number of lanes of traffic that it has. So our ultimate section, what we think Creech Road should be based on the transportation plan and the modeling that was done by Campo, is to be a three-lane section. So that is equivalent to having a two-lane road, one lane in each direction, with either a continuous center turn lane or a dedicated left turn lane everywhere that one is needed. Sometimes that's a little tricky, so that's why we have the continuous center turn lane, so that you always have that provided. The idea being that you don't want people having, that are making left turns to be stopping the flow of traffic, they have a dedicated place to go. Right now, the majority of Creech Road is a two-lane road, however, there are not very many places where a dedicated left turn lane would be warranted based on the amount of traffic that is currently turning there. So right now, it is considered to have that same capacity, which is 18,300 vehicles per day. This is just a summary of the proposed developments that we have seen, that have either recently been approved in that area, that have an impact on that traffic on Creech Road, or are currently in review. Just to show the overall numbers and how they add up, the existing Creech Road traffic was measured to be 5,200 vehicles per day. The potential total Creech traffic, based on the traffic impact analysis and the trip generations these developments did, is 12,883 per day for a total, leaving us a total capacity remaining of 5,417 vehicles per day. That's a lot of number, mumbo jumbo. And that looks like we have a lot of capacity left on the road, so there is official capacity remaining on Creech Road. And I point that out not to diminish the need to do these improvements or imply that there are no traffic issues ever on Creech Road, because there are always traffic issues, but just to point out the way that traffic engineers are looking at a problem as far as transportation and the movement of traffic versus the perceived problem when you're driving down the street. So from an analysis perspective, there is capacity on that road. There, of course, is always potential to improve specific locations that could cause problems in the flow of traffic.
A question.
Sure.
For clarification.
Sure.
So that is theoretical capacity with the appropriate number of left turn lanes.
Right.
So if it's, the reality is it's two lanes, and the way the development is going on in, on Creech Road, they're not, by our current UDO and state law, being required to make the, those level of improvements to create this theoretical capacity, right? Am I understanding that right?
Partially. So it is two-lane. The developments that we currently have in review, the things that we've seen, the things that have been approved, will be constructing those left turn lanes to maintain that capacity. So, and we'll talk about this a little bit when we get to the Creech Road improvement section. But yes, if you started adding development or making street connections that went through and did not continue to add those left turn lanes, your capacity would go down because you would have traffic backing up behind people trying to turn. Yes, the 18,300 number is theoretical, conceptual. Of course, every three-lane road everywhere is not going to operate the exact same way, but we use that from a traffic calculations perspective, just to, to look at improvements that are triggered by the amount of traffic being added as the area develops. And when we get to Creech Road, let me know if we don't answer what you're looking at, and we'll talk about it a little bit more. So really what we wanted to walk through from there is the improvements in the Creech Road area that are presented in the town's transportation plan. These have been consistent from the 2010 transportation plan through the update in 2016, and then of course, we'll be doing a new transportation plan this year, and we'll also be looking in, into this area as well. I'm not going to read all these to you because we're going to go through them one by one, but these are outlined in the, in the memo as well. This figure is also in each of those documents showing where each of those improvements takes place, and we will look each, at each of those individually. So improvement number one is that Creech Road from East Garner Road to Sanderford Road, so the entire thing, should be a three-lane section. This is related to what we just spoke about with the capacity, the three-lane section gets us that, that three-lane capacity throughout the entire corridor. So a continuous center turn lane or left turn lanes at appropriate locations allow for that capacity to be maintained. Currently, all high-traffic intersections and driveways have left turn lanes. That includes the, the school, East Garner Road, the church that's in the vicinity of the school. Once you get north of the school, that it's a long stretch of only two-lane road on Creech. The developments have, that have been approved on the north end, you see Tryon Point subdivision and Tryon Point Apartments up there, north of the curve, those will be constructing left turn lanes.
They have not been approved.
Tryon Point subdivision and Tryon Point Apartments have, yeah. There are several more that have not, yeah. So those will be constructing left turn lanes, and the others that are in review would be required to do the same. Looking at the potential of going in and basically widening Creech Road to be a three-lane road for its entire extent, the challenges that are associated with that are a few. So as far as related to development, as required, unless required by the traffic impact analysis, our UDO requires that development widen just along its property frontage, and then a traffic impact analysis impact would be based on the specific traffic generated by that development. So that results in a significant, there could be a significant development, and y'all have probably seen this several times, that would have limited obligation per the requirements of the UDO for widening Creech Road, because it's based on the amount of frontage that they have on that road. The UDO also requires that development widen to half of the ultimate section, so from the center line of the road to their edge, they make half of it look like half of a three-lane section. So if that is done, we're not getting a full third lane until we have both sides constructed. So we're getting half of that extra lane of pavement by a new development that only is required to widen on one side. So that is, that is one challenge. Another challenge, Creech Road is currently lined with many single-family homes, many of them are close to the existing right-of-way line. To be able to build that full section of Creech Road all the way through, it would be required to have additional right-of-way on either side, which would impact, potentially impact those homes along Creech Road. Also, as we are all fairly used to, Creech Road is owned and maintained by NCDOT, so any improvements that we would want to make along this road are subject to their review and approval. Few other notes about this potential improvement. Of course, as new development occurs and/or new street connections are made, dedicated left turn lanes should continue to be added, that's the only way we will maintain that capacity as the area continues to grow. Right now, we talked about needing additional right-of-way to build out the entire section of Creech Road. There is, in really all, actually all of Creech Road, there is sufficient right-of-way for that extra lane of pavement. There is not sufficient right-of-way to add an extra lane of pavement and the curb and gutter and the sidewalk and everything that we would want to be within that street section, but there is enough room to add the existing lane of pavement. So that is beneficial in the sense that we could widen portions of Creech Road, or development could widen portions of Creech Road to the full three-lane sections of pavement without having to acquire additional right-of-way. And then, just to have something to, to start getting idea of what we're looking at, we put together a preliminary cost estimate, this is of course, very, very high-level preliminary, for adding a center turn lane to a quarter-mile segment of, of Creech Road. So we did it in just a portion, so we can see what we'd be looking at if we add portions at a time, or have, or development is going to add portions at a time to be able to, to contribute toward that. And our estimate for that was around $575,000.
Just a quarter of a mile.
Correct.
With no sidewalk and curb and gutter.
Correct. Yes, and this includes construction as well as design, anticipated right-of-way, utility relocation, all the things that we see in projects, because we, we want to get away from just looking at construction costs, because we all know that that's not the complete picture. So this would be starting from design through construction. We'll stop here briefly. That's about it on the first improvement, which is the widening of Creech Road. Are there any questions on that before we move on to number two?
How many miles is Creech Road from Sanderford to, to whatever? Don't know, nor would you.
That is a good question. I don't know right off, I should have it with me, but I'll, I will look and let you know.
Because I'm assuming that, that estimate is based upon three-laning from, from a certain point to a certain point?
Yes, so this estimate was based on building out a quarter-mile segment of that road. And we started looking at that portion because we were looking at development that we have currently in review and what it would look like to build that third lane in the vicinity of those developments. So looked at the quarter-mile segment. Of course, this could be extrapolated. If you were to do the whole road at one time, you could see a lower cost per quarter mile just because you're not mobilizing over and over, but this gives us an idea of how each segment of that road.
And that would be a central lane all the way down, is what you're talking about, center turn lane, which you think of another problem, you know, like where the school is out there, where it backs out, backs up, people trying to get in and out, or trying to envision how that's going to be.
It's got a proposal on here at the end of that, that, that a way that you can help with the traffic by using the parking lot of, of the park.
Mm-hmm.
And I think they use some of that already, but yes, that's one consideration.
Yeah, but that, I mean, that's one way that this could be approached, that rather than considering widening all of Creech Road, it is possible to do further, further study to identify what are the areas where that, the left, center turn lane is, is more critical, and focus on those areas first and prioritize widening in those areas. And probably also from the town's perspective, which areas are less likely to be widened by development, because that's where it usually makes the most sense for us to pursue public projects.
As an approved town project, the Tryon Point subdivision is where Sanderford and Creech split, that's where the driveway comes out, so it goes that far for the town. Then once, of course, Creech is two-lane until it gets up there to some residential projects, Sanderford becomes three-lane much sooner than Creech, but still, if you go that far, and then plus, of course, the bridge is not going to be three-lane, we know that. So it's still, I don't know how the, the distance is, but the $575 just for doing the bare, not the bare minimum, adding a lane is pricey.
About 1.7 miles, give or take.
Well, you've got a three-lane section down to right at the tennis courts, technically, but as we all know, up there at the intersection, that three-lane is mighty tight. Intersection with Garner Road, I'm sorry.
All right, so the second improvement outlined in the transportation plan, we're hitting the big ones first here, and then we'll finish up with the smaller ones, is that Wilmington Road should be, should connect from Calabar Street in the south up to Creech Road, and should be a three-lane section as well. Figure on the left is just a snip from that overall map we looked at. The one in the, on the right, I know those words are probably small, this is also in your report, but just taking a look at, let's see if I can point this out, what that really means to build out that entire road, and what that means section by section. So in this first section here, if you can see my pointer, this, this portion of road does not exist, so this will be a brand-new portion of road to be constructed at the north side. We do currently have development in review that would be obligated to build a portion of that if approved, but that, that would be built from scratch. There, here, we have discussed that related to the development in the area. That will be a bridge to be able to make that stream crossing, so that's an additional, additional cost of construction of that road. This section here is kind of a funny one, so part of it has no pavement at all. There is a short section, about half of this, about half of that distance, has pavement that is, was installed with Hunter's Mark subdivision that is not being utilized now, but it was really the portion of Wilmington Road that fell within their limits, so they had to build that small stretch. So there is a portion there that does have some pavement installed. The next section here, the east half of that is being widened by the Wilmington Road townhomes, as well as they are extending the road slightly because it ends along their frontage. So they will be widening a portion of it and then building a new portion of it up at the northern end, and that project is in construction right now. This small section here is a two-lane section of Wilmington Road, so that would need to be widened to three lanes. This portion here is also a two-lane section, but there is potential for this proposed development to widen half of that on the west side. There's a, a portion here on the right side, on the east side, that would have to be, be widened as well. And then from here down, this section is built out where Wilmington Road curves into Calabar and hits Joan Sausage here at the end, so that portion is built out. So it's a mixed bag of improvements required, some widening, some building from scratch that would all have to be done in, in order to make that entire connection. Challenge is here, it's a, it's a big project, of course. So the right-of-way that is currently, exists, is not sufficient to accommodate the ultimate section of the road. So there would essentially be right-of-way acquisition required for most of that stretch of Wilmington Road to widen and to build, build the new portions of Wilmington. The stream crossing we mentioned, the crossing will need to consist of a bridge structure, so that is an additional cost that has been estimated at three to four million, that is construction cost. And then again, like Creech Road, Wilmington Road is an NCDOT-owned and maintained road, and any improvements would be subject to their review and approval. Other notes about this one, the extension and improvement of Wilmington Road is not currently funded in the town's CIP. However, it is on our CIP Horizon Items List, so this extension was one of the next transportation improvements based on our existing transportation plan, so it is on the Horizon Items as something that will be coming up as we complete the projects that are currently in, being completed. As new development of, of As new development occurs, of course, it should widen and/or construct portions of Wilmington Road according to the requirements of the UDO. So, we expect to continue to see proposed development in this area as we see anywhere, any of those that are going to be approved. Of course, need to widen and construct as they would be required to. There is current development under consideration that would build a portion of, the northern portion of Wilmington Road that would also contribute to the cost of the stream crossing at Little Arm Branch. And then a preliminary cost estimate to complete Wilmington Road from Calabar Street to Creech Road. This is a big one. There are a lot of variables, so definitely an estimate that would need a lot more diving into. But just at this very conceptual level, we estimated around 10.8 million to build out. Any questions on Wilmington Road before we move to the next? I guess I should mention as well the importance of Wilmington Road to Creech Road, since we jumped streets here, is that it provides a, a parallel corridor. It runs north-south in close proximity to Creech Road. So it provides an alternative path for traffic, which allows us to start dispersing traffic. So that's the importance of, of having that road connection on the, the traffic on Creech Road. Number three of the transportation plan improvements is that Creech Road should be aligned, realigned at the intersection with Wilmington Road to eliminate the curve. This one kind of goes along with the, the previous one and the construction of Wilmington Road. So again, the, the graphic on the left is just a snip from the overall graphic that you have. On the right, just looking a little bit more closely at what would be done here. This red line represents the new Wilmington Road. You can see the portion here that falls within the Hunter's Mark subdivision where we do have that strip of lonely pavement out there right now. And as this is further constructed, this would become the through movement coming to Creech north of what is now a pretty significant curve. So as this is built, that would align this way. And then existing Creech Road comes here where the yellow is. Right now, you can see this area is the existing Creech Road. So it comes here and then makes this sharp curve. So once Wilmington Road is constructed, then Creech Road would be realigned so that it would tee into Wilmington Road and be a stop-controlled intersection so that we can eliminate that sharp curve there and have a inappropriate intersection for those two roads.
At a high level, would there be a three-way stop or just?
I think, so, long-term, I would anticipate that being signaledized. It would probably not warrant signalization until Wilmington Road was pretty substantially built out because it would be based on how much traffic each of those roads is carrying. In the, in the short term, it, it could be a three-way stop until the, the signal is warned.
I have a question to go back to Wilmington Road extension. And it, it gives me a lot of, that one, not even the price gives me a lot of concerns. What gives me concerns is sort of the, you're creating an entirely new traffic pattern. And Joan Sausage Road is already a high-traffic road and will continue to be an even higher-traffic road as it develops on the west side. And so I'm trying to think of what traffic's going there that is of economic benefit to the town, right? It's on the very north end of the town. How many Garner residents are going to benefit from that improvement? It's a lot of tax money on the very periphery of the town and it, so I think, and I like the, the, what you wrote up. There's a lot of needs further study. And it's true, because there are all these questions. But I think that's one of the things, sort of that return on investment for the improvements that we're looking at, that we need to be considered of. Because as we talk about this one, it gets harder and harder to envision that concentration of resource. So, just, it's not just speaking to you, it's kind of speaking to all the council.
Thoughts.
But just, yeah, just thoughts, just thoughts.
Yeah, good thoughts. Yeah, and to your point, there's, this is a lot of information, but there's a lot of more information to be had before we are ready to build anything. We can qualitatively look at all of these improvements and know that they provide a benefit, and that's why they're in our transportation plan. But to be able to quantitatively say exactly, who does that benefit? How much does it benefit them? Where does it, where does it change things? You know, where does it increase traffic? Where does it decrease traffic? That's where you get into the need to do traffic modeling and look into those things further. For the Creech Road realignment portion, of course, at least the northern part of Wilmington Road has to be constructed for this work, to work, because it's being realigned to intersect with it. It will be most effective when Wilmington Road is completely built out because you are aiding that parallel corridor to Creech Road. The construction of Wilmington Road and the realignment of Creech Road will both require right-of-way dedication for multiple properties to accommodate all that new roadway that we just looked at on the figure. Creech Road and Wilmington Road, again, are NC DOT owned and maintained, so anything we want to do there is subject to their review and approval. Notes and next steps. The realignment of Creech Road, similar to Wilmington, well, that, yeah. Creech Road is not currently funded in the town's CIP. However, that realignment has been coupled with the Wilmington Road Extension Project on the Horizon Items List within the CIP. Also, current development under consideration for approval would be obligated to dedicate the necessary right-of-way and construct a portion of this improvement. So there is potential for development involvement in this improvement and construction. We did not develop a specific cost estimate for this one because we have it tied in with the Wilmington Road Extension, but we can certainly break that out if necessary. Moving to number four on the transportation plan improvements. And I buy that number four box got a fun little line in it, but this is to connect Creech Road to Wilmington Road at Jewel Street. So Wilmington Road, we talked about, provides that parallel north-south travel movement to Creech Road. What you really need to make that more effective is to have some places where they connect east and west so that traffic can travel between the two of them. So in the transportation plan, we have two such connections shown. One in the vicinity of Jewel Street, and that is this one. Jewel Street is currently a gravel road that ends approximately 700 feet east of Creech Road. So it is constructed right here at the beginning, but just about 700 feet of it, and it's just gravel currently. Challenges with this connection. It will require right-of-way dedication from the single parcel that fronts on Wilmington Road that is between where it is currently, the right-of-way currently ends and Wilmington Road starts. There is, this area is currently reserved for future right-of-way by Platt, so that, that was done, which, which helps in that process, but the right-of-way will have to be formally dedicated. There will potentially also be a need for construction easements to be able to perform that work. Then just as another note, since the extension of Jewel Street is a transportation plan improvement, it would have to be constructed if development activities were to be proposed on the eastern property, certain development activities. However, based on staff understanding of plans for this parcel at that time, it seems unlikely that that would occur. So just to go back so we see what we're looking at. There is right-of-way for a portion of Jewel Street, and then it ends. The rest runs through a single property that is owned by a family. That's where right-of-way is reserved for, for future use, but it is not formally dedicated. And to our knowledge, there is not plans of this family to develop this in a way that would require them to construct that road anytime soon. This connection also includes a stream crossing, not quite to the extent of the stream crossing on Wilmington Road, but there is a crossing there which always increases cross, the cost of construction. This extension is not currently on the CIP. There is development in review that would be required to construct a portion of Jewel Street. The remainder of Jewel Street could potentially be constructed by a public or private project. And then a preliminary cost estimate for Jewel Street Extension, including improvement of the existing section and extending it from there to Wilmington Road. And our conceptual cost estimate was around 1.3 million. That is to build out Jewel Street to our ultimate section, so that would include curb and gutter and sidewalk and everything that we would expect to be there.
Is that to the property line of the?
That is all the way from Creech to Wilmington.
Okay.
So the entire thing. Final transportation plan improvement is an east-west connection from Creech Road to Wilmington Road near Cook Street, which is similar idea to Jewel Street, just in a more southern location, providing that east-west connection between the two parallel corridors. Currently, Cook Street extends from Creech Road approximately 800 feet to the east. A portion is paved and a portion is gravel. And then the remainder is not constructed to. Challenges. The connection would require right-of-way dedication and construction easements from the parcel that is on Wilmington Road. There's currently one large parcel in between where it's constructed and Wilmington Road, and it also includes two stream crossings in that area. Notes and other notes about this goal. The extension improvement of Cook Street is not currently funded in the town's CIP. There is, it's different than what we discussed on Jewel Street. There is, have potential for this improvement to be constructed by development. We do currently have proposed development on a portion of this in review. So there is potential for at least a portion of Cook Street to be constructed by development. And therefore, we determined that it's not an improvement that would be recommended for the town to pursue independently at this time because of the potential to work with development to accomplish that improvement. Alright, so just a summary and some next steps. We have some short-term priorities, things that we want to be doing in the short term here. Mr. Singleton mentioned working with Wake County Public Schools. One of the things that we heard as concerns about Creech Road traffic came up was mention of the traffic from Creech Road Elementary School backing up. So, we want to make sure that we find those isolated problems and see what we can do to fix those in addition to looking at the, the bigger long-term improvements. So, we have, Mr. Hodges has reached out to the school to look at what they are currently doing. It looks like, at least one of the things that we were proposing that might be helpful, which is routing their carpool through the adjacent parking lot at the Elementary School Park, they may already be doing with their carpool. So, we will talk to them further and see what their operations actually look like now and what we may be able, if there are any suggestions that we could make to improve the number of cars that they can stack onsite so that they're not backing up onto Creech Road. Work with developers to maximize required involuntary improvements to Creech Roads such as widening and turn lanes to ease current traffic concerns. So, of course, anything that comes in for development is required to develop per the UDO and their traffic impact analysis. And then to continue to work with developers to, to look at ways that they can positively contribute to the transportation network. Working with developers to encourage completion of Jewel Street and Cook Street as part of private development plans. Utilizing the fee and lieu payment for the Little Arm Branch crossing, if received from that proposed development, to begin preliminary design of the Wilmington Road Extension and realignment needed to refine cost estimates for CIP planning. So this is, you know, assuming that the full, we're moving forward with looking further into the Wilmington Road construction and how that could be accomplished. There is potential to use contribution from development for that corridor to, to start work on that. And then as we do have an upcoming transportation plan update this year, we can consider including this corridor, this area, as a focus area for additional analysis and modeling in the upcoming transportation plan. So we did, we did talk previously about needs for potential further study or modeling in the near term. There's always the opportunity to do that, but there's also the opportunity, if we don't feel like there's additional information needed right-of-way, to include some of that in the transportation plan update to, to help us as we move forward with those improvements. And then more long-term priorities. Move Wilmington Road Extension and Realignment to the CIP that is currently on the Horizon List. So, it's waiting in line to get promoted up to the, the CIP list. And begin developing a funding strategy for that project. Evaluate the cost and practicality of completing the widening of Creech Road from East Garner Road to Sanford Road in areas that are not likely to be done by private development projects. So that would be identifying more specific areas that we think the town could work to fill in the gaps and where those efforts should be prioritized. And additionally, working with Go Raleigh to plan for future bus service along the Creech Road corridor. Because of course, having multiple modes of transportation hopefully alleviates some traffic as well and provides options for, for people to move throughout the area. All I have for you today, but I welcome any questions you might have.
Well, that was fantastic information. I can't thank you enough. Have you got the very last slide that shows improvements one, two, three, four, and five? That's in our book there.
Yes.
It's got all of them at one time. That gives us a good kind of, kind of overview.
Try not to make you dizzy.
Yeah, there you go. That's a good one to look at while we talk about the assignment that was given to you and which you've excelled at. And that is to help us understand the options that are currently existing on some kind of transportation plan. And some of these haven't been dusted off in a number of years. Some of them have been laying dormant for, for 10 years or more. But suddenly, with all the activities that's going on in the Creech Road activity and the, and the potential development, we have to start making some decisions. If we could wave our magic wand and we had unlimited money, would we want to do improvement one through five? Not to mention rerouting the carpool lane? Sure. Or maybe, maybe not. Maybe we only want to do a few of those. But the time is now to start making decisions. And the one that crystallized for me is when we started looking at the Wilmington Place, projected project. And the developer has already put into Wilmington Road, the realignment of Creech. And if, if that's really where the council wants to go, if they really want to focus on this Wilmington Road, then we need to make sure we do exactly that. But if you look at the cost and you look at the other expenses and the other out-of-pocket expenses for the town, maybe that's a 20-year plan, not a five-year plan. I, I don't know. But these are the decisions we have to make. We're going to try to do Cook Street, Jewel Street, and Wilmington Road right-of-way? Probably not. But, but some of it will be revealed by the developers who work on either side of these. Because the town does not have infinite resources. But you've done an excellent job of giving us the pros and cons, the potential costs. And now, it's, it's not going to be an engineering decision. It's going to be a council-led decision. Which ones do we focus on? Which are two-year horizons? Which are 20-year horizons? Is that a brief synopsis of what you're telling us?
Yes, yeah, I think that's a good synop- synopsis. I think from here, we would just be looking for guidance if we should be moving forward with any particular improvement. And also, since we had previously discussed doing additional study or modeling, looking toward a decision on whether we feel like that is necessary at this time or if we have sufficient information now to make some preliminary decisions about which direction we are moving with the option to do for.
Yes, thank you. And I think this was brought to our attention even more specifically by our Planning Commission, who asked us, asked the council to give them more guidance about what's the master plan? Which are the priorities? As they try to give us good feedback on these individual projects that are coming to them for review. And there's at least two of them in front of them right now that they heard the first hearing, they continued the hearing, waiting for guidance from us. So our mission here tonight is to give some kind of guidance. And I think you've pretty well conceptualized it here. This might be about as much guidance, which is the relative cost and potential to get it done, kind, kind of guidance. Then they have to make some decisions and recommendations. And then this town board, the town council, has to make some decisions and set some priorities. So there's no easy answers. There, there's no magic bullets here. But you've given us a great amount of information that we should be able to. But you've given us a great amount of information that we should be able to use. That being said, I'll defer to any specific questions or comments from any council members as we try to pass this along with emphasis or de-emphasis to the planning commission so they can make better decisions that will be in harmony with our visions for the next 2 to 20 years. So ladies and gentlemen, comments, questions, transportation, Creech Road?
Looking at me?
I'm looking at you.
You want to go first, Kathy?
We appreciate the work that you've done. It tells us what we've got to decide on. And it shows the whole picture instead of just this spot here, this spot there. It incorporates the whole town, I mean, the whole road, the whole neighborhood, and considers all of the, all of the needs all along the way. So it's a starting point. It's overwhelming, but it's a starting point.
It seems like the two main things are the Wilmington Road Extension and then you've got Creech Road. Those are sort of the two real issues. And really, the Wilmington Road Extension, really, what it creates is another access point to 40. Because it doesn't, if you go right up Sanderford, you're at, you know, Rock Quarry, and then you're at 40. So there are pros and cons to that, too. But I think when, in terms of prioritization, I think with Creech Road, it was safety and capacity. And I think those are, should come to the forefront in terms of funding and planning. I think that the Wilmington Extension needs more research. And also, we need to, at some point, we've kind of committed to it because it's in the transportation plan. But the funding mechanism is something we need to figure out. But we also need to figure out the funding mechanism for Creech Road. So I have more questions than answers.
Don't we all? But at least we've got some fuel here to help us refine our questions. Mr. Vance almost certainly has some input on transportation.
All I can say is that I want to thank you for all this work that's done, that was done so quickly with limited information to provide to us, knowing that this is a very, very high-level and conceptual. Looking at, and basically what I'll be saying tonight would be speculation and without analysis. And going, and with that being said, looking at the, looking at the information we have and decision we have to make tonight to give the planning commission guidance as to how they should move forward. And which, again, would be, would be a difficult one to make. But looking at the information that's been given with the developments that have been provided to us, and what I've heard with the, well, which will improve safety on Wilmington, on Creech Road would be brakes and movement, which would be stopping in various areas. Instead of going straight through Wilmington, straight through Creech, stopping has been proved, has been proven to help us with the safety process. So in looking at the, looking at the projects and how they will help improve, help improve the vision of Creech Road with breaking up the movements, would be one, one thing I'm looking at. And that is the improvements possibly at the Creech Road Extension portion being placed and putting in that three-way stop that will put a brake in the movements there as an initial, initial improvement along the goal is what we're trying to achieve overall. With further analysis being needed in order to understand the modeling as to how the traffic will actually flow, the destination points and things that that needs to understand, which ones would be the preferred alternative as we get deeper into the development process. We are a very long way from that right now. So my initial, I guess my main point would be, whatever, whatever project is helping us reach those transportation goals would be the ones that I would look more favorably overall for this particular corridor. Those projects which are not necessarily adding to the improvements to Creech Road would bring some initial concerns without further analysis. But that's a long way of saying that, that, that there, there just needs to be more analysis. And my initial guidance would be to look at those projects that are looking favorable to adding improvements to Creech Road. And there's only one so far that I can see clearly. And that's, I don't know whether that's guidance or not, but that's just my overall view of what I see. Because it's definitely a complex decision to make and trying to provide guidance to the planning commission to make a decision to get back to us. That's what I'm trying to, trying to ferret out of this, of all this information.
Excellent comments. Ms. Behringer, you have another question?
I have a question. I don't know where it fits into this whole conversation, but the intersection with Creech Road and Garner Road, as you come up Creech Road toward Garner Road, there's, the site's distance is terrible. It's worse than terrible. And many, many times, you'll see people crossing that intersection thinking there's no car coming. And suddenly, a car comes up over that hill and screeches to a stop. So if that can be added into the considerations, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, we can take a look at those things. This portion, we didn't really look at things like the vertical design of the road and where that becomes problematic. It was more, this is, the transportation plan is more traffic-based. But those are definitely valid concerns as well.
Got at least three points, and I'm going to do them all. Let's look at the pretty chart here. The park at Garner Station, the biggest one's already been approved, the 3-2 vote. Minimal impact and improvements on Creech Road. The one that was talked about tonight, 205 townhomes, minimal impact to Creech Road to improve it. 1306 is the same. Wilmington Place does have some potential because of the potential realignment there and the connection to Wilmington Road. The Creech Road subdivision, the Habitat Humanity Project, minimal improvement. Tri-Round Point is going to do their side, their half of the improvement there. That's one. The Tri-Round Point subdivision, that's just, there's no improvement. We, all these east-west connections sound great, but there are unintended consequences and collateral damage. And I just don't think this, I just don't think people are thinking this out. We have a project here, system number two, Wilmington Industrial Road, which is doing some warehouses. And then there's some residential currently zoned behind that that buffers the property at Cook Street up to Creech Road. And they're considering asking that to be all commercial. And there'd be warehouses there. Well, who'd go to warehouses? Trucks, tractor-trailers. And guess what? They're going, with the tractor, there's 80,000 truck drivers shortage in the country. I heard on the news report last week. 80,000. So that's a constant turnover. So they're going to come up 40, it's going to say, get off from Rock Quarry, go to Sanderford, go down to Cook Street and turn left. Or go down to Jewel Street and two left. So we're talking about potentially putting tractor-trailer traffic. Can you see that going over that narrow bridge? That'll be fun. You're inviting, if some of these take place, you're inviting unintended consequences of tractor-trailer traffic on Creech Road. And people are going to follow what it says. I don't care how much you school them. We still have tractor-trailer cabs parking on Jones Sausage Road in front of East Garner Elementary. There were two there today, early today and late in the afternoon. It's so bad with the tractor-trailers that Amazon is paying for the property across the street for security to keep the tractor-trails from parking on their property. So this is just, we're not going to wave some kind of magic wand and people not follow the directions. The potential improvement of east-west connections, I'll state specifically to Cook Street and Jewel Street, are the unintended consequences is you're going to bring more traffic there that's tractor-trailer traffic. That's dangerous because you're going to have a warehouse development that backs up to Cook Street, excuse me, to connect to Cook Street. In that particular one. So you have to think that that east-west connector sound great in the transportation plan, but unless you think out the consequences, I think backwards. I think different most people. I look at the bad and go backwards. Well, that's about as bad as it gets. And if you keep going and doing the consequences, you'll figure that out. But that's an unintended consequence. So I just don't think these connector route, Wilmington Road, it makes the most sense. But again, like Mr. Dellinger said, who's it impacting the most? Don't we have other places in town where we might have more impact with some transportation improvements? Maybe so. The third thing, could you please, you had the chart with the number of vehicles and, yes ma'am, thank you, Ms. Harrison, I'm sorry. Now, you put down the two-lane with left-turn estimated capacity would be 18,300. Now, as I understand it, that increases the, I've heard this from a couple folks, and I think it's, I don't know how accurate it is, that that increases the capacity on a road by adding the left-turn lane about 30%. 30 to 35%. Well, if you didn't have left-turn lane all the way and you took 30% off 18,300, that's minus 5,490. And the capacity is 12,810. The capacity over here is 12,883. So unless you had left-turn lanes the whole way, you're maximizing the capacity of Creech Road.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And I know that some individual projects will get left-turn lane. But again, there are a lot of residential driveways that are not going to get that. And so it sounds good, but unless you do the $575,000 every quarter mile, and that's not with sidewalk and covering gutter, the capacity is going to be pretty maxed out if all these projects are approved. You got, that's got, again, unintended consequences. It sounds good on the chart until you backtrack and think, okay, what if this doesn't happen, this doesn't happen, this doesn't happen? So again, the biggest thing you want me to pass along to the, to the planning commission is this. Don't approve any residential projects moving forward unless it's going to make a significant impact to Creech Road and improve the quality and the safety of people who use Creech Road. Pretty cut and dry. Because the residential projects that are proposed will not do that. Ones that already got done, got approved. And we did do the train station apartments because that was tied to a affordable housing project. There'll be affordable housing prices for at least 30 years that we were part of. And so that's something that we did to allow that. Not subsidized housing, not Section 8 housing, subsidized housing for affordable housing. It's a different or work-friendly housing, whatever you want to call it. But it's not a subsidized Section 8-type government, federal government program. So again, it's pretty simple. We're not going to spend all this transportation money on Creech Road because there are a lot of places in town that need it. And you can't put all that development in there that's being proposed. So you want me, again, my suggestion to planning commission is don't approve any residential projects unless it's going to significantly improve traffic and the safety of people who use Creech Road. That's my, that's my suggestion.
Thank you, and that's an excellent one, and it's concise and it's clear. And it could be realistic. And Ms. Harrison's not in here saying, let's build all of these next year. I don't think that's what she, she has conglomerated for us. All the things, they're rather on the different maps, the different things. And you did an excellent job of summarizing some of the pros and cons and unintended consequences. I hope somebody wrote down what he said that we want to tell the planning commission. Be careful.
It's on film. No, I'm not shy about saying what I think.
Okay, sometimes we need to see it in writing. Excellent observation.
I need you to.
Thank you, yeah. Mr. Matthews, observations, questions?
My favorite, Mr. Mayor, we've had some good dialogue here tonight and great presentation. It's good to see all these on that one sheet. It really puts it all in perspective. Mr. Mayor, one thing about all of this, I would agree with my counterparts that those developers that's willing to contribute to making Creech Road better, I would agree with Mr. Vance, I look favorably on those. If not, that's a whole different ballgame. But I can see a big work session coming up on all of this, trying to get in here and zero in on some things because we can't get it all done tonight. I know you guys are looking for some guidance. But we've got an all-day budget session. It's not going to have an all-day transportation session coming up to say, well, this can't work, this can't work for reasons, you know, we can all come up with. So, but that's where I'm looking at because it's not going to be an overnight thing. And they're looking for guidance. And I would agree with, would agree that if you're going to make some significant contributions in making that road better, you know, that's something we'll look at. But that's all we can do at this time because the revenue's not there. And DOT, we've not had this conversation with them so we don't know what their plans are, if there is easing any money. And Mr. Vance knows better about that. So we've got our work cut out ahead of us. And so we just got to sit down, like I said, have a good session and let's start sorting it all out and see what we come up with. What can work and what can't work for whatever reasons.
And what I heard is that, break me from wrong, the capacity does not currently support the improvements that we would like to propose. The, well, the three, the three-lane, the three-lane, the capacity currently does not support that.
So right now, the capacity on Creech Road would be considered the same as if it were a three-lane road. Because anywhere that a dedicated left-turn lane would be warranted, there is one. As it further develops, or, you know, if we do make any east-west connections, you know, further streets are connected, turn lanes would have to continue to be added to maintain that capacity. Of course, you know, as was mentioned, that doesn't necessarily account for every person turning left into their driveway off Creech Road. So is that a potential slowdown to traffic? Yeah, definitely. It's just not the way that traditional traffic analysis looks at it. So not to say that it's not important, but just, just more so that everyone understands where, you know, recommendations of something like a TIA come from. They're not considering those types of items. They're looking at where left-turn lanes are warranted by a number of traffic turning.
A follow-up, just comment after hearing my fellow council members. I'd written in my notes, safety, safety, safety. And I think you meant to comment that the traffic analysis is more of a, it's engineering and numbers-driven. But there always needs to be that emphasis on, on safety. So we do traffic calming and all these other things. Injecting safety into our transportation plan. And I think Mr. Singleton's points about projecting impacts and consequences in quantitative and qualitative ways. And saying, oh, if this type of development happens here, there's going to be this other type of, this type of traffic that is going to be generated. So I think safety is the number one issue to think about. Because it's, it's a dangerous road. The more traffic we add on to it, and the speed stays the same in the driveways. So I think quantifying what safety, what the safety improvements can be. And then consolidating that into a contribution mechanism, I'll call it that.
Yeah, that makes sense. I guess something similar, you know, you look at that center turn lane. This is not considered when we decide if a turn lane is necessary or not. But you think of people turning out of their driveways and having to turn left. Well, sometimes having a center turn lane gives them a refuge to stop in so if they can't get all the way across. So that's not necessarily something that would be looked at to warrant a turn lane. But in practicality, we know that that can be helpful to the safety of turning.
Or in listening to residents and saying, I have trouble getting out. I think that's what happened when we were, you know, with Bryan Road and White Oak Road. People are like, I'm sitting there for 15 minutes. And we're not like DOT, we're not going to wait somebody to die before we make a change. So, yeah, like Mr. Vance said, I appreciate all this information. I think I'd be interested to see what planning commission's input is because it's a lot for them to digest, too. And I'm curious to see what their feedback is, is to us on, on this information, too. So thank you very much.
Something else to point out is, the Creech Road tennis courts have been there, I think, since they started going to Rick Park, which is the 70s. So in the town property, we don't have right-turn lanes or left-turn lanes. Now, I know it's not a high-volume use, but it's still a town project and we're talking about what we're making other people do. And we don't have left-turn or right-turn lanes into one of our recreation projects. Just remember that. You know, it's easy to point and say developers do this, but if we're going to talk the talk, we got to walk the walk. You know, so that's, that's something else to consider. You know, there are two driveways there. It's like two driveways and two residents. Just bringing that up. We got to talk about everybody else doing it. We have to look at ourselves also.
Well, I just can't believe how fruitful this discussion has been. I think a lot of great points have been made. I think a lot of attention's been paid, a lot of information generated. The council does not have to take any action on this. You can make a motion to pass this in a certain disinformation, a certain way to the planning commission, they ask for it. Or we can just give them the word, hey, watch the tape and look at the presentation. You know, you guys tell me, if somebody wants to make a motion, we'll entertain it. If you just want to go on record and say, listen to our conversation, look at Ms. Harrison's presentation, read the book, and y'all give us some ideas. This is a complicated, ongoing question that we're going to have. So with that.
Certainly.
Yeah, I'll just make sure they get this presentation, this information and the presentation. You know, they have projects pending, but it'll help that conversation and maybe move those projects along as well.
Yeah, sounds good to me. So does anybody want to make a motion? Or we're just pretty happy with the information that we've unearthed and discussed?
The motion, so move whatever was.
Pass it along, tell them to look at the video and look at the presentation.
Tell them to take, as the mayor should, this fruitful discussion and information. Tell them to take, as the mayor should, this fruitful discussion and information, and then give us their feedback. We'll see how fruitful they think it is, they may not.
Made by Mr. Singleton, seconded by Mr. Vance.
I was joking, actually, but anyway.
All in favor of passing this along with the comments signified by saying aye. Opposed with nay. Passes unanimously. Ms. Harrison, thank you and your team so much, and thanks all, all those citizens that we've heard individually and expressed their concern by coming here tonight and have contacted us outside of this as well. And a special thanks to our council members who have been very thoughtful, or a very, very challenging thing, but at least this is up and in the light. We know we have to make some decisions. Thank you very much. So that concludes that particular new and old business, and we'll move along to committed reports, managed reports, attorney reports. And let's start first with any council members who have a report from their committee that they would like to make. I'm seeing two noes. Ms. Behringer? Committee reports, no committee reports. I know we have a manager reporter, too.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. We have a few updates to share with council. First, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Manager Hodges. He's going to go over your May Talk of the Town report this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Good evening, council members. On the Talk of the Town report you have in your packet, we'll highlight just a few things. A number of these were smaller items that had been handled. We reported them out, so you would have some closure on those. Couple of things we just wanted to mention that may be ongoing. Mr. Vance had mentioned trash dump near the entrance to the Evolve, Evolve Drive on Highway 50. We've been working with the owner. They've had some of that removed, but they're continuing to work with the owner to get the resources to remove some other, the areas this time where the dumping occurred was outside the right-of-way, so we're having to work with them on removing it from the private property. Caddy Road Public Safety Schedule, just wanted to highlight that fire, police, and EMS began moving into the facility and operating out of it yesterday. You have a calendar invitation for a ribbon cutting in June, but we wanted to let you know that everyone started moving in there today, yesterday. And in addition to the staff of those departments who've been anxiously awaiting that, I want to give a special thank you to our IT team. They jumped in at the last minute and have really come together for coming to some solutions to some unforeseen technology issues in moving three different agencies into a facility, which we have never done before. So I want to thank that team for jumping in and coming up with some very creative ways to work with police and fire, so they could be operational on Monday. Also understand that our, our partners at, at the Fire Department did some of their own cleaning yesterday, because some of the cleaning crew did not show up for a final cleaning. So kudos to everyone for jumping in and getting that facility ready. There's a note here about the Wake Transit twenty thirty-five, Wake Transit Plan twenty thirty-five update. I know we sent something out directly to council members with the links to the survey, and we are asking that council complete the surveys, but also share that with others. Our communications team is sending that out through our usual methods, so that those links are accessible and clickable. A couple of council members had asked about a construction entrance at the Dempsey-Bitten Water Treatment Plant on Highway 50. I included there that they're making some enhancements to the facility that are just sort of regular for the, the way that we, we use that facility, so there's nothing significant being done there that tripped any of the traffic requirements or stormwater, but it is work they're doing to add some facilities for some of the means that they use to treat our water system here. Couple of mentions of staff-related things. One of our Parks and Rec staff members, Colleen Buchanan, was awarded the Wake Audubon Society's John Connors Conservation and Environmental Education Award recently for work that she's doing. So wanted to just take an opportunity to, to give a shout out to some of the things that you may not always see that our staff is out doing in recognition that they're getting by others. And a thank you to staff who participated in our recent litter cleanup. Some of them are pictured on the front of your report, but fifteen town employees recently contributed twenty-two and a half service hours to pick up over thirty bags of trash on a section of Garner Road that the town staff has adopted, and we did this in conjunction with the Earth Day celebration. So again, just wanted to recognize our staff for being out in the community and helping with the efforts to keep it clean. One thing that was not listed on your Talk of the Town, but we had mentioned previously, and the mayor specifically asked to give an update on, was some concerns that Mr. Alex Lee brought regarding some dumping and burning at the Cambria Development Site, also previously known as the Walters Buffalo Development Site. Our staff did work with the contractor. There was a subcontractor that was doing some of that and had specifically been instructed not to, so that relationship is no longer in place with the persons that were doing that in terms of the hauling to the site. I will note that there was an observed burn at that site today. Our staff is working with DEQ and the Forestry Service to make sure that all the appropriate permitting was in place. And just as a reminder, there are ways in which, with the proper permits, construction or grading sites like that can operate burns, so we're working closely with them to make sure that everything was in place that they need for those type of burns on those sites. We'll follow up and let you know if we hear otherwise.
Question in reference to the burns was the materials coming elsewhere to be burned at that location.
Well, and, and that's what was identified that should not have happened, but some had happened. And so then the regular burns would be for things that have been cleared on the site. Yes, sir. So that's all of the regular, those regular updates. Before we move into the monthly analytics, just pause, just to see if there's any questions about any of those updates or anything else that was on the first part of your report.
A question on the Walters Buffalo, and we should probably get weekly updates on that until they clean up their act, because this is the second time they've engaged in that kind of stuff. And so we want to be on them. It's unacceptable, and we just need to be, they need to provide us weekly updates on what they're doing to prevent that from happening again.
Okay.
That's my opinion, but I'm tired of them.
All right, moving on to the monthly.
Before you move forward, in reference, Walter Buffalo and the Pawtucket Agreement is all somewhat connected here. Can we get status reports as to where they are in the process of that improvement of White Oak Road?
Yes, sir. I think that Ms. Jones typically provides the monthly update that gets passed along, and she typically emails that out once she receives it. I think she has a running report form that she adds the monthly report each month to that, but I think she may have a recent development that she could share tonight, since you've asked the question.
So around the first of the month, I email you the monthly update, but it, it does appear that they have secured the right-of-way that's needed for the White Oak and Bryan traffic intersection. So we should be getting confirmation of that plat being recorded, you know, within a couple of days. So at least that part of the project is moving forward.
So if you were referring to the traffic improvements related to that, and Mr. Vance, then that is the update there. So we consider that a very significant improvement that is beneficial to the overall project itself, and also other reviews of plans are moving forward. So I think the signal is currently, the signal itself is currently in review. I believe all the other reviews have been completed for the other improvements. So in general terms, we believe that the transportation improvement portions of the project are moving forward and currently staying on schedule. Moving on to your analytics, you will, you will see that, you may not have last month's report in front of you, but I will report that last month's tall grass and weeds had one reported case at, at three point four percent of our overall cases. We have quickly jumped during grass-growing season to be twenty-eight reports, making up thirty-nine point four percent of your report. So our code compliance team is very, very busy receiving those reports that citizens and yourselves are sending in. They're going through the processes that we have for notifying folks. You may recall that we mentioned to you previously a new yellow door hanger that's being used by our teams to try to draw awareness to any times that there's a violation, so that it makes it easier for people to know that contact has been made. So our team is, is working hard to keep those, keep those situations in hand, and then you'll see all the other cases there. Many of them stay in similar numbers throughout the year, but you'll see the other type of things that our code compliance team is working on, along with other members of inspections as well as planning public works, and in some cases, police and other departments. So again, many departments responding to these right now. A big focus is on our tall grass and weeds. And I'll be happy to answer any questions if there's anything you have. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hodges. Council, just a few more updates want to make you aware. We're excited to share that the Boathouse will be opening this weekend, and we appreciate everyone's patience as we work to staff the boathouse appropriately. It'll be open Friday through Sunday from seven-thirty AM to five PM, and we will be open on Memorial Day from eight-thirty AM to six PM. So we're very excited to be able to bring that service and amenity to the community as the, as we get into the summer season. Also wanted to share with council that the ETJ expansion request has been submitted to Wake County. That's very exciting. If you recall, we had that on our agenda for meeting earlier in the month. Now we move into the public comment and education phase of the process, and so planning staff has put together a pretty comprehensive engagement plan that we'll be sharing with council with all the details regarding public meetings and information resources. We are excited to share that we have information posted on the town's website as a first place to go for information. Information can be found on the website at www.garnernc.gov/ETJ. So more information to come on that, but it's an exciting time as we go through this process. So happy to answer any additional questions that council may have this evening. That is it this evening. Thank you for your time.
And moving right along to attorney reports, we already got a little sneak preview on the one thing, but we'll turn it over to you, Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm pleased to introduce to you tonight and to the town our summer legal intern, Max Harris, who's seated beside me to my right. I am, before we turn it over to him, I am grateful to council for supporting a paid summer intern. Garner was one of the first municipalities to have a paid summer intern, and other municipalities and Wake County have now followed suit, so there's great competition for that program. And also with the budget request, which you'll see, you know, I am asking to expand the summer intern program to part-time in the, the fall and spring semesters, because I think it's a valuable, both valuable to the town and also to creating a capacity for more municipal lawyers in the future to, to serve growing towns like the town of Garner. But at this time, some of you have met Mr. Harris, but I'd like him to just say a few words to you about his background.
Hello, good evening. I'm Max Harris. As was mentioned, I'm a third-year Campbell Law student and a North Carolinian. I have a general interest in municipal law, land use regulation, and property law, and that's what initially brought me to this internship. And I just want to say I'm very grateful for the opportunity for the citizens, the council members, and the staff for welcoming, welcoming me. And public service is something that's very, I'm very interested in, and I want to learn as much as I can this summer, so please contact me if you have any, any assignments for me or anything that I can help you with. Thank you so much.
Excellent, excellent. And that concludes your reports?
Yes.
Thank you. And we'll move back to council reports, individual council members. Do you have any other reports? Any news, comments?
I would just say, I appreciate the, the effort that was done for this, for this transportation report, to pull it together on such a, a short notice and provide it to us in a comprehensive way, and allowing us to see there are still a lot of questions that have to be answered as we move forward and, and in, in, in not only with our road improvements, but also with our development process.
Two questions and an information request. One, just the timeline for the VA clinic. Do we have any idea what they're moving on along? And we might not know off the top of our head, but that'd be good information for us to have, especially for, you know, going into the weekend.
Ms. Jones, I can tell you that the most recent update we had was they're still targeting the complete construction towards the end of the calendar year and hope to start operations generally in spring of twenty-five.
That's good news. The other is five forty timeline. It looks like it's coming along, too. Well, I've driven down a couple times and the road's there. Just curious when they're going to open it. They were scheduled for, I think, this fall, but I don't think they're off target. Is that, oh?
They were, they were on the radio this morning, being interviewed. In about ninety days, which would be the fall. That's what they said.
Very interesting.
And they've already started the first leg from here to Knightdale, because their contract was already approved, that particular first leg, which is White Oak to Seventy or whatever. Anyway, the first leg is, they're already working on that while they're here. That's what they said.
All right, the other is an information request just on, very curious about projects that we've approved that haven't moved forward. I think the Grove-Montember Project, East Garner Town Homes and the Pearl Street downtown, it's, it's moved and fits and starts. If we get information on ones that haven't moved, maybe twelve months after we've approved them, and just if we have information on why they haven't, I think the market's changing a little bit, and so I'm kind of curious as to what, what's going on, and that might help us as we evaluate projects to see what, what's, what's going on. So if you can, in the next month or so, make that kind of list of projects that just haven't moved forward after approval, that would be, I think, informative for us.
We will do that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, to Mr. Dellinger's, one of his questions, we, the mayor and I went to the groundbreaking last week for the five, the next leg of the five forty expressway. It was pretty, pretty impressive, impressive and pretty exciting at the same time. We're looking forward to actually being able to use that road in our lifetime. So that is really good. That's awesome.
Excellent, yeah, that was entertaining, and one of the interesting things they said is that the next phase, Phase Two, from, from us to Knightdale, is just over half as many miles, but costs just as much as the first phase. So its cost have doubled since they've done that. Okay.
Yes, and thank Ms. Harrison again for her information. Appreciate that. There's a lot of information in a short period of time. Mr. Harris just volunteered to give him a job to do this summer. We can throw him the Creech Road project. I think you want that, but anyway.
Probably quit tomorrow, Nancy.
Yeah, yeah. Like, Mr. Warren in the budget team, that's going to be an interesting discussion on Thursday. It's going to be really some interesting discussion we have on Thursday, and we may have to have another budget session. I don't know, hopefully we'll conquer it in one day, but we may not. I've seen the time where it's taken more than one day, so a lot of questions. Thank you.
Just one thing, Mr. Mayor, you alluded to it earlier, that on Veterans Sidehouse Memorial Day will be Monday at Lake Benson Park. Last year, even though it had rain, it turned out to be a fabulous get, get-together, a lot of veterans and families, and it's all community, from the young ladies singing the National Anthem to a Cub Boy Scout playing taps. And I know you're going to be out there, and it's going to be, and they'll have tours from the VFW and American Legion of the Memorial out there answering questions. And so if you get there by nine o'clock, you should be okay, but it's going to be a good way. And as the sign says, "Come into Garner," you know, we are, we support our veterans. And, and so we invite everybody to come out, and it's going to be on the town website, so if anybody wants any additional information, they can find it there in the saucer.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Bring your chair. Bring your, bring your chair. Bring your chair, because it's going to get crowded, yeah.
Excellent, thank you. Well, that, that concludes the items on our agenda, and I think we're going to consider a closed session this evening here. Is there a motion afoot?
Citation?
It would be pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-318.11A5, to establish terms of a proposed employment contract, and Section 143-318.11A6, to consider conditions of appointment of an employee.
Moved?
Movement by Mr. Vance, seconded by Ms. Behringer. All in favor of moving to a closed session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. We will, we will move to a closed session, and then we'll come back in here after that.
But will we take a break before the closed session?
No, 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 we're going straight to work. Of course we are.
I'm falling down.
Take five.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you. Well, that concludes the items on our agenda, and I think we're going to consider a closed session this evening here. Is there a motion afoot?
Citation?
Yes. It would be pursuant to North Carolina General Statute Section 143-318.11A5 to establish terms of a proposed employment contract, and Section 143-318.11A6 to consider conditions of appointment of an employee.
Are moved?
Movement by Mr. Vance, second by Ms. Behringer. All in favor of moving to a closed session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. We will, we will move to a closed session, and then we'll come back in here after that.
But will we take a break before the closed session?
No, 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 no. We're going straight to work. Of course we are.
I'm falling down.
Take five.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Excellent. Thank you. Well, that concludes the items on our agenda, and I think we're going to consider a closed session this evening here. Is there a motion afoot?
Citation?
Yes. It would be pursuant to North Carolina General Statute Section 143-318.11A5 to establish terms of a proposed employment contract, and Section 143-318.11A6 to consider conditions of appointment of an employee.
Are moved?
Movement by Mr. Vance, second by Ms. Behringer. All in favor of moving to a closed session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. We will, we will move to a closed session, and then we'll come back in here after that.
But will we take a break before the closed session?
No, 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 no. We're going straight to work. Of course we are.
I'm falling down.
Take five.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. That was the chime and now we reconvened in the public session of the town meeting tonight after adjourning the closed session. And could I get a report from our town attorney about the results of the closed session?
Yes, Councilman in closed session. Some personnel issues but no action, no official votes were taken in closed session.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn the regular meeting.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Behringer, seconded by Mr. Singleton. All in favor of adjourning the regular meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. And we stand adjourned. Thank you.